Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lake Orion Village Council to order. Roll call, please.
Ken Van Porffley.
President.
Brad Matheson. Doug Hobbs.
Yeah.
Ray Hammond.
Here.
Jerry Narsh.
Here.
John Randville.
Here.
Chris Thort.
Yeah.
President Van Porffley, do you have a warm?
Thank you.
We're not going to mute everybody, except you.
The purpose of this special meeting is to discuss the next phase of the water main replacement project. Village council meeting scheduled it for the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget, including tax rates, goals and objectives and review. Is the second portion of this meeting. So I'll open up for public comment. To see if we have anybody that might call in or want to chat.
President Van Porffley, we have no emails, no, no chat, no call ins, no public comments.
We'll close call to the public and public comment, move on to item five, items for consideration. Item one, water main replacement, next phase, proposed reduction. And Mr. Young, would you like to start?
Certainly, it's council in your packet. I don't know Susan if you can bring it up or not, but there's a memo that gives some background. On the phases left to be done, currently we are under contract for phase one and two with Fontana. And that work is continuing this week now. Where they're on Heights Road and then once they get them with Heights, they'll be going over to Winter Sub. And that's all part of the first contract, six million dollar bond issue, which. The Fontana contract is five point one million of that, so that's moving forward. So the next phase is three and four and. It becomes an issue because the funding through the state. War Fund, the Drinking Water Revolving Fund had earmarked. Four million dollars for us for the next phases, which were originally phase numbers three and four. And that was again another four million or five million, depending on how the bids come in. So we're at a point time wise that we need to make a decision whether we're going to continue to proceed with. The next phase three and four, because their funding cycle ends on a, on a year, on an annual basis. We thought it was would carry over and it only carries over for one year and. There's so there now we're at a point, decision point, whether we need to. Proceed and if we can meet the timeframe, which would be by the end of May to have the plans approved. And then commit to the, the project. So that's one issue. The other thing of it is if we don't make this round, we then would go back and be competing for future funding. Through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, which is a competitive fund. It's, it's alone, it's a two percent bond issue, but it's still competitive. But I've gone through, I'm working with the Hubble Roth and Clark, a number of. Scenarios to try to cut back on that project because that. Included some four inch and six inch water mains and through the sections three and four, which are in the map that you have. And Eddie can explain the scope of work where we did cut it back to one point six million dollar project. Which basically replaces only the four inch lines, which all happen to be off Orion Road, which is in Orion Township. But there are water customers and with the timing and the funding situation. With our revenues cut back now and volumes of water at question, I'm going to, I'm recommending we hold off on. Proceeding at this time and wait for. Better times and conditions when things stabilize and then hopefully also there might be some grant funding, but. Before we get to that point out, Eddie wanted to comment about the scope of work. We had a couple of different options. And what we're looking at, so I want to have Eddie speak for a few minutes on. What we're faced with at this point for as far as the decision whether we want to proceed with the next round, continue with the next round for the. BWRF funding or not. Eddie? You want to put Eddie on?
We have our Hubble Roth and Clark representative, Mr. Schmitz available, sir.
Yep. Good evening. Yep, good evening.
We can hear you.
Being the council and just briefly going to go over different scenarios, the water main replacement dating back to last summer, we first. Looked at replacing all of the phase three or four, which was a part of the original project plan from a few years ago. And that cost was four point two five nine million approximately to do everything. Then we looked at a couple of other scenarios. As Joe said, just reducing. The scope to just do the four inch mains only, which brought it down to about one point four million dollars. That's including contingencies and all engineering costs. And then we looked at what we did just a couple of weeks ago, we took our water model that we originally put together a few years ago. And we updated the model showing. All of the replaced water mains now west of M twenty four. And assumed that all of the other mains that we still need to finish this season here still, including the rest of Heights. And then the John Winter Sub, assuming all of those are replaced to eight inch mains like the plan shows. We updated the model, show all of that, see what the results are for the rest of the mains east of M twenty four. And the fire flows did show up, definitely in compliance with what they should be at, so. Joe and I discussed this a couple of times recently that if the fire flows were. Then possibly you could not test the six inch mains.
Eddie?
East of M twenty four, so we looked at.
Sure. Yes.
You.
You have a question, Ken?
Well, you're talking and then it happened twice now and then it just goes silent. And then you come back on, maybe there's something you're doing, I'm not sure.
Uh, no, I, let me see if there's something I could turn off here, but there's a.
Jerry has got his hand up. Councilmember Narsh has his hand up, Susan.
I'm sorry?
That's, I got it.
I got it. Yeah, Eddie, your computer was freezing up is all. I'm not sure what kind of wifi signal you got.
Yeah, that's usually what the problem is.
Yeah, let me check a couple of things here. Could you hear everything now? Did it come through eventually? Just.
Yeah, it freezes. It freezes, I mean.
Let me know again if I had, I tried to. It froze up again.
I think we're good at this time. You can begin.
I'm showing a pretty good signal here, but well, I am, okay, so, and then going back real quick, when we looked at again. The fire flows east of M twenty four, we realized that a lot of six inch mains were probably okay for now and maybe if you didn't have the money that we didn't have to replace those at the time. However, we did look at one section of main on Florence, south of the Blant Simms Elementary School. Where you still would have some potential fire flow issues. Now, and also the age of the mains and some issues with the main that we would also recommend replacing that section between Shadbolt and Jackson. So if you add that into the cost of replacing all the four inch mains, you're at about one point six million. So again, just a brief recap, all the phase three and four, all the four and six inch mains, we about four point two five million. Just the four inch mains, one point four, and then the four inch mains with the one section of six inch. On Florence, be about one point six million. So those are the three scenarios that we looked at.
Councilmember Narsh.
Thanks. Eddie and everybody, I just, I wanted to verify. We have, other than that section over by Blant Sims, we have fire flow pressures that are. Appropriate throughout the village at this point.
Assuming that all of the mains in phase one and phase two are, will be completed as per our plan, which. Should be, should happen here by early summer, assuming all those are eight inch. And then you take out all the four inch mains east of M twenty four, yes, we're, we're by the model that shows that. Everything else would be sufficient at this point. Now, again, the six inch mains are not. You know, we don't put in six inch mains anymore, as you know, so we would still obviously recommend putting in eight inch because we don't know what. It looked like inside of those mains, you can cut them out. But in general, if you're looking at the fire flows, the model does show at this point, assuming all the. Mains in phase one and phase two were replaced and then the rest of four inch that you would have sufficient fire.
Okay, and then one last question for Joe. Joe, is that? What you're recommending that we do is this phase of it right now, the one point six million or no?
No, I'm recommending we not take any further action until. We've determined the extent of impact on our water and sewer revenues because of the downturn in the economy. Because we find that we, we continue the next project, we increase our costs and debt service, which. Means we have to have revenues to cover, otherwise we're going to be starting either way at our fund bounds, which we're already. Budgeting to do that, but I don't want us to take a chance when we don't know the extent of. The impact of what the new normal is going to be as far as water flow. In the packet that I provided you with the listing of our highest water users and you see that most of them are restaurants.
Right, yeah.
And so our budget projections and our rates were based on a certain volume of flow. And the rates from that, and I would be cautious not to take on any more debt at this time. Particularly what we have, as we pointed out, the flows are good in town. We, by the way, we do need to verify the flows with the fire department. Once we get all the water mains installed and contract, right now we have for phase one and two, we won't actually physically. Test and verify what the model shows. The fire chief or assistant fire chief, John Penders, felt very good and comfortable with what we've had and what we've done. These places, they do need to go out and verify the flows on those sites. The other thing I wanted to mention too, in that bid that Eddie provided on all, well, the most recent ones, we're now required to. Fund the replacement of the private service line all the way to the meter. And in that current bid of one point six million, there's two hundred and fifteen thousand, I believe, was the number. Two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of service line, private service line replacement. And we technically need to go back and do the thirty nine or forty services that we already ran to, which there still may be more. Which it runs, I believe, five to, was it, or three to five thousand dollars a service line, Eddie, is that a?
Well, we, we've been using about five thousand, but then again, it depends on the length of, of the service too, so if you've got a hundred, hundred feet. Back, it could easily be tens of thousands of dollars at that point, so.
It's a guesstimate.
Right, exactly.
It's absolutely a guesstimate.
Frank did tell me he quoted St. Clair Shores, three thousand for short and five thousand for long, but that's.
They're pretty short there though, and even their longs are pretty short.
Right.
Yeah. Comparatively.
So I just wanted to mention that another liability out there that we got to address. Once we technically, when we finish phase one and two, we need to go back and. Replace those forty plus other lines that we may find along the way as we put in the rest of the water main. But the testing, the flow testing is good, that's the good thing. John? John.
John?
Yes.
Sorry, the names are mixed.
Okay, if we delay this, because we had already talked about this night, few months ago, and I thought we were going to go with it. With the reduce, but if we delay it for a month or two, is it going to affect any of our grants or anything?
Yes, the funding, we will have to go back and reapply and compete again.
Well, the amount of water loss that we have lost in the last five weeks, four weeks. Is it gonna make that big of a difference? Can we, we're going to reduce it to one point five instead of the four point.
Right.
Two, five, nine, so we're going to have quite a bit of savings and as far as water services, this Orion Road and Winter Sub is. Going to reduce their, it's all flat ground.
Right.
Installation of the mains is going to be a piece of cake compared to Bellevue and Swiss Village, so. I'd hate to delay it.
Right, well, you're talking about replacing Orion Road, you mean? Orion Road.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not delaying, it's pulling out. It's stopping our project. We would have to begin anew at another date. It's not a delay that Joe's recommending. And just to clarify, if you were to look at packet page twenty two. That's the remaining four inch. That's in the village after we finish phase two, that's the bulk of it. That would need to be done to provide sufficient fire flow throughout the village. It's in the areas of Jackson. Washington.
You're talking four inch or six inch? You're talking six inch. Yeah, I know where that is. Yeah. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
That would be phase three that we're not doing.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
And definitely. And it's, wait, go ahead. I have one other comment, just for HRC, because Joe and I talked about this earlier today. The original one point four million that was given to us as an estimate. In August of two thousand nineteen, and then we had one point six million, which is a revision. That was given to us from Hubble Roth and Clark. And April fifteenth of twenty twenty. The linear footage of those estimates are the same, forty seven hundred. What's different is that portion for Blant Simms pool.
Right.
And at three hundred and twenty, two hundred thousand dollars difference. At three hundred and twenty linear feet, it's about six hundred dollars a foot, which is not reasonable.
It's crazy, yeah. APW could bring it in.
So, so my point is, is that there's something else in there and Joe happened to mention to me. That it probably is another fifty thousand dollars, which is in that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar figure that he mentioned earlier. Which is on your packet page thirty six. For putting in those line replacements to the home, possibly. That's all a guess. So my point is, is that I, I don't think the numbers are. Are correct for the Blant Sim. It's a guess.
Sure.
It's all we got to work with. Was there, Joe, go ahead.
One thing about the water main you mentioned in the, on Washington and Slater and that area, that is nineteen forty water main and there's a lot of likely. Lead, gooseneck leads, I don't know, so.
Most of it is nineteen, twenty.
Well, we got a flow issue, which is one reason for the water project, but now we have, of course, the DEQ or Eagle now saying we have to replace. Certain amount of those lead service lines every year, so.
Right.
Just wanted to keep in mind, we got unfortunately a number of issues that we got to address on a long term. Accounting and that's just in the water area, as we know, we got other issues in the sewer area, so. That's another reason why I'm suggesting we hold off and try to get some other grants, if the infrastructure on the federal level or comes through. We might have an opportunity to get this project paid for a hundred percent, or not have to borrow the money.
Well, you got to keep in mind too, that we've got the Water Resource Commission sixteen pump station. Issue that we've got in the background here, that's going to need some funding. And, and so it's going to be difficult.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Narsh.
Yeah, I, I, that's what was on my mind as well, is between the lift stations, if we've got. Adequate fire pressure flow right now, then I would be in favor of the manager's recommendation of tabling this project. Until we have adequate funding and adequate. Knowledge of what our water use is going to be going forward as we phase out of this, people aren't going to be rushing back restaurants. Unfortunately, as fast as we think, there's still a lot of fear out there. So I would be strongly in favor of putting this project, although provided that we have adequate flow pressures from the fire department. And that's what led us down this path to begin with. If we've satisfied that as of right now, clearly we have more work to do. But with a funding issue the way it is, I would be in favor of tabling and accepting manager's recommendation because of those and other issues pending.
Omo.
Can I just add one thing real quick, just to reiterate that, when we looked at the model again. With everything done in phase one and phase two. Your fire flows are sufficient on your six inch lines east of twenty four, but still the four inch mains are still the issue. So what I was saying before, your fire flows would be. All sufficient throughout the village, once you replace the rest of the four inch main.
Where are those four inch mains?
Those are all, those are all along Orion Road. Miller, Mandalay, if you can see on the, the section four.
Right.
Susan has up right there, those are all four inch mains, those ones that are highlighted.
Joe, it was my under. It was my understanding that when we test those in the past, we had sufficient fire flow out of those, is that correct?
I am not sure on that. I'd have to verify that with John Pender.
Member Narsh, you have some validity to your question there because on the map it says four dash six inch. Water main, so we're not clear on what's truly four and what's clearly six. So some of it could be six, little bit of it could be four or it could be vice versa, we don't really know.
I just don't recall fire flow issues in that region.
Right. Right. In other words.
It might be a factor because of it's in the township too.
So the only way we can determine that is by doing hydrant testing.
Flow test.
Correct. What's the last? What's the last testing we had? Do we have that somewhere?
It was, it was a few years ago.
We got to do it again anyways because of the way things are looped and the improvements we've made, it may have improved overall.
Right, right.
Councilmember Randville?
Muted. Does that, can't hear him?
Three, to the cemetery, Maraday, and a small portion on Miller Road. Converse Court, that complex there, that would just stub off, they would still have to, they'd stay on the four inch, so. That's about it. That eight inch wraps around Orion and Miller Road. On Orion Road, a ways, the first hydrant.
I would like to ask a question of HRC, because maybe I'm just not understanding this one map properly, which is packet page twenty two. The black and yellow check lines indicate a four or a six inch line. But the blue lines indicate. Twelve inch and eight inch, is that all water?
Yes.
So why are we replacing four and six inch line, or that, the blue line is a replacement?
No.
The blue line is already there?
Yes.
Why aren't we looking just to stub it differently? Why, some of the blue line running right alongside the four and six, and they say eight and twelve inch?
Whereabouts?
I'm sorry?
Whereabouts?
Well, hang on a minute, quit flipping around. See that hand right there? There's a blue line that's running right along, leave that hand, please, leave your cursor, hold it, stop. Okay, you see, no, it's gone. How about?
There's two water mains there.
Yeah, Flint Street, right?
Yes.
That, that showed the old, these are old maps and these showed the old six inch, which was abandoned there, but the twelve inch we put in, if you recall back about a decade ago now, I believe.
Okay, so I wondered, but this is. Phase three, it says three right there, so all of those black and yellow are abandoned?
No, just the, just the Flint Street.
I'd say there's no four inch in the village anymore.
Okay, done.
They might show down the map, but not there.
Right, one of the last pieces that was abandoned was the Norishore piece, which. There was an old four, but there's also an eight there too, but the old four was.
Yeah, that was a stub off somewhere.
Right.
What is, what does this map represent then?
Well, a- again, these are the mains that are in, in the ground, but. You know, Flint Street was obviously abandoned because we upset, where we put in a brand new twelve inch main back in two thousand and seven or whenever that was, two thousand and eight. So, but the rest of these are just shown that they're, they're actually six inch. And the four inch, again, this is an older version of the map, the neural maps we have, which is, I don't know what page you had in the packet, but. Shows, indicates better the side, the correct sizes of existing water mains. This is an older version, and this was like one of our old proposals from last year, I believe it was.
Gentlemen, I, I am disappointed, I, I want, I want current information, Mr. Randville?
A water main, if you're talking about Flint Street, Flint Street, Orion Road and Miller Road. That eight inch wraps around the corner and goes up Orion Road to the first hydrant. It's eight inch, the four inch was abandoned twenty years ago. Thirty years ago, whenever we, we renewed it from Perry Street up to that point. We put eight inch to feed the nursing home.
And we stopped the new twelve at Perry, correct, John?
We stopped the, yes, yes, stopped the, well, that was a few years later, APW put that in, the eight inch.
So this map is inaccurate at this time?
Well, just that corner.
Confusing.
And if you go to the next page, if you go to packet page twenty four and twenty five, there's more. The individual sections.
Right.
How?
And again, this corner of Miller, going back to Miller and Orion there, we've, we have not had good records on that. Ever really, and I know Jeremy and I were trying to figure this out a couple of years back too, where exactly, and it was never, we could never answer. We never get an answer on exactly how that eight inch wraps around.
I marked, I marked the maps up and I've told everybody a dozen times.
Yeah, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to retract my earlier statement because phase three, according to packet page twenty four, there is complete. There is no four inch in the village. In that area three.
Right. That is correct.
It's only in area four, Orion Road.
Ken?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Question for Joe. Joe, just in the section that we're talking about right now, that, that would, would be the one point six. Million, how long would it take to get fire department water flow readings in those sections? To determine, we know what the rest of the village is meeting that, but in those sections that, in the area that we're posing, how long would that take? To get a hydrant meter reading, a flow meeting, a reading?
Just need to schedule with the assistant fire chief and his crew to do it, so we can do it this week if they're available and. Able to do, willing and able to do it.
All you gotta do is head about three hydrants.
Yeah, my, my only thought process is provided. I don't know if council's willing to table this issue based on those readings. But if we meet those recommended levels or we're satisfactory. I, I don't know, in my mind, that's. I, I don't know, in my mind, that's a, a point that I'd like to know uh before we table, um, I mean, recommendation to table, and we've got a lot on our plate. And I agree with all the issues and the reasons for which the manager is stating that. Um, but I'm also looking at the public safety aspect. I would, I would like to see if we can get those readings and then move this, the decision, if that's possible. I don't know, Joe, if the timing is crucial.
It's up to HRC. They gotta design the plans and time to get them to the state for review. So Eddie, and I leave that up to you.
We, we've also done those type of tests, as you know, in the past, uh even in Lake Orion, we've done it for many of our clients. So that is, we, we can do hydrant flow testing as well or assist fire department as needed. So if that's something that you would want HRC looking to, I can talk to Bill Pennycook tomorrow morning and see what his availability is or, you know, any of our other staff members that could go out and do that or assist whatever way we need to. Um, and then beyond that, I know, Joe, I think you, you had already uh requested the thirty-eight extension of Eagle. And I don't know if you've heard anything from that, but when I did speak with the um Eagle engineer Abu about uh the permitting, he did say that, you know, should be pretty straightforward. He's familiar, obviously, with the project, cause he reviewed the first two phases, which was a lot more involved uh than either fees, phase three or four, whatever portion we do. So he said that it wouldn't take that long. I, I think from our perspective, we could get out whatever plans you need within probably a couple of weeks, cause you really wouldn't need to do uh full-blown topography on these plans. Um, more of a log job. So uh I think we can make the deadlines. Eagle, you know, gives you that extension and we could get back on the milestone schedule. Um, so I don't think that would be the issue. It's just, you know, wanting to get hydrant flow testing, we probably would need to get that within the next week for sure.
I mean, my thought process is to table this to the next meeting based on the results of the hydrant flow testing to assist us in determining whether we table. Um, as Ken said, it's, it's not an adjournment, it's tabling it directly. Um, if, if council agrees, I just, to me, that's the only thing in my mind that I don't know. I, I would totally agree with everything the manager's recommending, but I, I'm just in the back of my mind, what's that water flow in that region if we're gonna make it for a while?
I, I think we should also keep in mind too that the project is not done yet, phase one and two, so hard to say how much different the flow test would be over there once you put the rest of, you know, phase two in, place that, but there could be a difference. I mean, you could try now anyway, just to see what they're at, but um, you know, again, there, there could be a different reading later, once the whole project is complete, phase one and phase two.
Being, being, yeah, being that far away from phase one and two, I, I can't see there would be a half a pound difference, not, no difference at all. No.
Wouldn't be much.
No.
Oh, that's fine.
So if Joe could get ahold of Pender and do a flow test uh next couple of days, that'd be, that'll work.
Yep. That would, we can arrange that and then we can just have it on the council meeting for next Monday, the regular meeting.
That'll work.
We don't need to have our engineers assist with that.
No.
Okay.
And um-
Let's, you're gonna do it gratis.
We work something out.
Keep in mind, please. Thank you. Keep in mind, please, that uh, what the village manager's recommending, regardless of that flow reads right now, which could change possibly after phase three is complete, is that we not continue on because of funding considerations.
Yes.
So we could always vote today to still abandon the project and continue with the flow check. Or do flow check. And then where will we find one? Is, that's really what's propelling this from Joe's side, correct? Joe?
Those are options, yes.
But, but the major issue right now, Joe, is the funding, correct? I mean, we don't have the funding.
The instability of our sources of revenue are a major concern right now.
So do, let's, I think you made a couple of different motions there, Jerry, or would you like to stick with that option of testing first and delay?
I, I believe that, I mean, I, I can remove that. Uh, I, you know, the, the original was to um seek testing and delay, but I mean, if, uh, where's council stand on that? It'd be up for discussion.
The original, original was to go with the village manager's recommendations, which I supported as a possible motion from you. So let's just step back and what would you like to do at this point?
Well, I, I think then we continue with manager's recommendation to abandon. Uh, but we also continue to see where our flow tests are. Uh, but we don't wait on, you know, I'll, I'll make a motion that we uh move forward based on the recommendation of the manager. And uh, but that we continue and request flow tests uh as soon as possible.
What are the flow tests are pretty bad.
We can revisit the issue at that point. I tend to agree with Jerry and Joe. We're setting ourselves up. There's no, right now, the, the, the prospects for revenue decline are significant. I think things are gonna be uh, we're surprised at the revenue problems we have over the next twelve, eighteen months. And I think to plan to go forward right now with this phase of the project is, is frankly, I think it's foolish. So I think we need to suspend it. I think testing the water main pressure and flow is normal business. We should always continue to do that. If something pops up, there may be something small we could do, whether it be an isolated section or a pump issue, who knows? But I think, uh, I think Joe and Jerry are spot on with our revenue problems. Uh, we're gonna have prob, we're gonna have, we're gonna have issues. And I think it's, it's our, it's our responsibility to suspend spending and debt going forward indefinitely.
That sounded like a support.
Yeah, I support it.
Well, that'd be the source, do they?
We have a motion on the floor currently to accept the village manager's recommendations and continue with testing and support any other discussion. I have one comment. Joe provided us with the top one hundred water usage customers consumed with. And on there is uh, I'm surprised, is um one of our council members even and some people you might know in the page.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. There is a couple of people that have high water usage. Heads up, I asked Joe to check the source of information. But I just wanted to mention that there's residential units here that are using a lot of water and we're not sure why. It could be a problem, it could be an error.
It could have a leak.
It could be. Mr. Matheson, you're on this list.
Yeah, I know.
Twelve thousand nine hundred unit, cubic unit. I'm like, how's that possible?
I, I saw that and I checked everything around. There's nothing leaking in my house. I know that.
Toilet leaking? The toilet's not leaking?
Nothing's leaking.
All right, well, I've never found a water meter to be bad, so.
So there's-
You're coming in the same as uh, as Blant Sim School, Brad.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we'll check.
The point of it is, is that again, that would be if we were to find what the issue is, there is a possible decrease in revenues right there too as well. But uh, it's something that we're gonna work through. And um, Mr. Hammond is absolutely correct. Councilmember Hammond, uh between the WRF, our Water Resources Commission and our pump stations and this water main project, we've got, we've really gotta pull it tight. And so we've got a motion on the table. We have support. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Ranville?
Yes.
Vanport, please?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, moving on to the budget process proposal for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Manager Young?
Yes, council, uh, there's a lot of information for us to go over with today, but I'd like to start first with the tax revenue in millages, which if you go to page ninety-four in your packet, uh, I had to put together the information on our taxable values the past two years and our tax rates, what the impact on Headley is and what our options are relative to setting a tax rate and the revenues correspondingly with that, page ninety-four. Uh, as you know, currently we, we levy thirteen point one oh two nine, two one mils, which is between the general fund and the police, which includes a heavily override millage for the police. So the, the general fund millage is ten point one three three, one eleven thirty-six and the the fire combined is two point nine eight eight five. And we've had that same tax rate for the past three years. Uh, as you recall, we before then had the millage collect through the township and we were able to get it separated, so uh that's the tax rate it's been. So we maintain the same tax rate. Now, the taxable value though, of course, goes up based on Lee Headley uh increase and this past year, it was two point four percent for this upcoming year, it's one point nine percent. And that's for properties that have remained in ownership and, and not, not been sold, because once a property is sold, it becomes uncapped, which increases our tax value, which the new owner would be paying higher taxes on, as well as any improvements to any properties, whether it's residential, commercial. So our taxable value has gone up six point five percent uh this past year, which is significant and uh is great. And long, part of that is the one point nine percent Headley increase. So listen, I'll offer you some options to consider if you wanted to consider reducing the tax rate. Keeping in mind that the revenues generated will increase no matter in either these two options, either way, it increases. So today, the taxable value is a hundred and forty-four million dollars, which is uh eight million more than last year, which was a hundred and thirty-five million. If you look on the top right-hand upper corner of that sheet, you'll see that seven, eighteen, nineteen and twenty taxable values. And then down below in each column, I show you the revenues. So in two thousand and eighteen, it was a million seven and, and two, two thousand and nineteen is a million seven eighty-one. And for this upcoming year, it would be one million eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. We levy the same tax rate, thirteen point ten twenty-one. It's a six and a half percent increase. And I showed the next box down as if we were to reduce the tax rate by one point nine percent, which is what the taxable values went up under Headley, which would mean that you would pay the same amount of taxes, dollar amount of taxes this year as you did last year, if we reduced the tax rate uh by that amount, which would be uh on the page over, it would be twelve point eight five three two mils. So it's a reduction of, again, the one point nine percent. And uh, that would be a total reduction in revenue. Instead of being an increase of a hundred and fifteen thousand, it would be an increase of eighty thousand, so reduction to thirty-six thousand dollars, which the taxpayers wouldn't pay. So if nobody, if, they'd be paying the same amount of taxes as last year, assuming they didn't, just by their property. Another option to consider is the Headley override for the police department. Uh, that millage is currently at um, was it point one four six seven? Uh, it would go up to point two zero eight one in the highlighted in the yellow, the first row of yellow on the right-hand side, that shows you uh if we're to maintain the current rate of that, the override, we would be needing to use point two zero eight one mils because the police maximum millage is met with the current rate that we're using. So we can't go above that, whereas um using the Headley override, we can maintain it, cause the Headley override has a one point one three seven uh capacity, even future taxing capacity. We see that in um the fourth column there. As does the, the village's general operating millage, we have point, uh, let's see here. Point seven three oh nine um tax millage we could levy at this time, if we wanted to. But again, these proposals are based on keeping the tax rate with the general fund and um the current or is an option to reduce it by the one point nine percent uh thirty-six thousand dollar reduction, or an option to not levy the heavy, Headley override, which is thirty thousand. So I just wanted to present you some options, there's various scenarios that you could consider. Uh, but besides adopting the budget, this will be the second most important thing we'll do on May eleventh, you'll do, which was setting the tax rates. So I wanted to make sure you understood and are comfortable with uh, well, we're looking at dollar-wise and tax rate-wise, uh, cause it affects the property owners, residents, and then of course what we have to operate on for our police and fire, police and EPW and uh services for the community. So I don't know if there's any questions that I confused you totally, do you somewhat follow what I've been trying to highlight here? And I did show it on a graph down below the dollar impacts that the different options are. Are there any questions or comments?
I have, thank you. Could we go back to? Thank you. Uh, the it would be nice to be able to reduce for our residents. But one of the factors here is property value increase of six point five percent last year. We're expecting property values to decrease this year and next year. The one report that I watched, I believe you were on that webinar too, Joe, from the University of Michigan, said that they expect it to be twenty twenty-two before we come back out on a flat line with it. There'll be a spike. So I just wanted to mention that because I'm, I'm not sure how we could reduce one point nine based on a growth here when we're going to run into property value decline here soon. Mr. Young?
One thing I did want to point out, make sure I said that that six and a half percent increase includes new investment, the people building new homes and new businesses, which has been a big factor. And we still have that ongoing even today. We, BZ just approved two variances for two new houses. Um, but certainly the, the um I guess the worst case scenario is if one, one year, Headley came in under one. You remember that, you're, I sent that in packet here. One year did it coming with zero increase, it was point three decrease. It's possible that there could be a Headley decrease that comes into play, but um, which is another aspect of the whole property tax value, the base of which on our, our revenues are one part of the base of the revenues are generated. So, but from the trending standpoint, the tax rate for this upcoming year coming by is set and fixed. It was based on the values of December two thousand and nineteen. So those numbers are hard numbers. Those won't be changed until next tax day, which is this coming December two thousand and twenty. I agree. Any question?
I just wanted to add, um, based on, just, just to coat tail on what I said previously, goes, goes for this situation as well. What Joe says is we're set for this year. When, when we get um into next year, we'll have more information. We'll know what's going on. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, my, I just got a thing, said my internet connection is unstable. I don't know if it was me or you, but anyway, um, we're set for the next twelve months as far as the six plus percent. And, and that is through real property growth, not necessarily valuation changes. But I think that's a stable factor for our decision-making. The one point nine percent to me, in this environment, I believe we're just, we're at the iceberg on this community being impacted with job loss and, and um, businesses going out from underneath us. We'll know a lot more next year. I think for now, we need to go, we need to abandon and walk away from the, the one point nine percent that Headley offers us the option. I think we need to take the six plus percent in real property growth that's already baked in. And, uh, on, on top of that, I gotta say, I think as a, as a council, we need to be, um, prepared to reduce our budget in flight during this coming year as circumstances dictate. I'm not, I'm not saying we need to slash our budget at this moment. I read through it. Joe does a good job. We, we are a, a fortunate body that we're in the black. Uh, but like I said, we're going to have a lot more information next year, uh, or even in a few months. But I think this community is just seeing the tip of the iceberg of the economic impact that, that we're going to see over the next twelve to eighteen months. So that's my nickel on that and I appreciate you letting me get on my soapbox a bit.
Thank you, sir. So there's no action needed on this item. This is more of a preliminary. And there's more to come. We've got a couple of budget session date in the work. Mr. Young has sent that out to all of us.
Yeah, we want to talk about that before we adjourn tonight, if we could.
What about right now?
About the meetings?
Mm-hmm.
If you'd like to, sure. Uh, cause I sent out a memo suggesting that next Monday is our regular council meeting. At seven thirty, which we're proposing, we should keep it the regular meeting at that time because of the notice requirements. Changing the time, right, Susan?
Yes.
But, but we could, but we could have a work-study session prior to the meeting, you know, say at six or six thirty and then have the regular meeting agenda at seven thirty. If you're willing to do that, otherwise another option would be to have a work-study session Tuesday, May fifth. Monday is scheduled for a planning commission meeting, which we may or may not have. So that was a suggested another work-study date. Because on May eleventh, at seven thirty, again, the regular time, we need have enough time to discuss the budgets, uh, um, which part of which is the in-person personnel vacancies I want to talk about besides costs, but I didn't want to run that by. But so we've got some other things to talk about. Certainly, we want to we are holding back on any discretionary spending. We're not filling any positions, but I, I did want to discuss with that with you after we talked about the meeting schedule, about some vacancies we do have and what direction you'd like me to proceed on those. But I just wanted to check with you, see those dates and times and work for work-study sessions on the budget and including the DDA budget. Right now is next Monday before the co- regular council meeting at six or six thirty. Acceptable or work for everybody? Next Monday?
Six P M, everybody good? Can we go back to full screen? Every thumbs up if you're good for six P M? There you go, sir.
Six P M, okay. Then Tuesday, the, uh, fifth, you want to do that at five P M? Schedule it for another follow-up session if we need it. The five o'clock on, on, on Tuesday, May fifth. All right, John, are you good? All right, we're good. All right. And then, uh, the May eleventh, we'll just assume we can meet at seven thirty. I, I don't hope, if we want to need to, we couldn't meet before then if we need to make decisions before then. But for now, we'll just go with the twenty-seventh at six and May fifth at five.
Okay, we'll, we'll look to fulfill that last one on May eleventh when we get closer.
All right, very good.
So that ends this discussion. Earlier, you had mentioned that Mr. Randville could talk about DDA budget? If he so wished to. Does that stand, Mr. Young?
Yes, I did want to talk about vacancies, uh, somebody though.
Yeah, let's talk about that first.
Okay.
I, uh, uh, vacancies, so you're, I thought you just mentioned you were going to bring that up on the agenda for Monday. But I think it's very important that, uh, we promoted a couple of people and the people that's being replaced, uh, it's going to take a while. So I, we need to get, we need to jump on that and get their replacements into the group.
If I could be specific, we, we have an acting DPW director. Which we have a vacancy there for our, our labor staff and normally we also hire a seasonal person to help with mowing and grounds maintenance. So we normally have five full-time people and a seasonal person. Uh, originally in the budget before March tenth, I had proposed to putting in the budget to have a full-time, six full-time people because we have not had good luck at getting competent, capable seasonal people because the job market was such that we got the people didn't want to really take what, what it takes to be committed to do a good job in our community. But since then, since now things have changed, I still feel we do need to fill, uh, the, the vacancy, at least the seasonal person that maybe could become a permanent person. If, and Chris Carver, you know, is acting public work director. Chief Mayor, hopefully he will work out. Uh, but in the meantime, I would like to at least hire a seasonal person with the prospect of possibly depending on the budget and everything, move on. But I'd like to get Clint to hire a seasonal person in the DPW area. The police area, we have a vacancy there too. As you remember, we promoted the Lieutenant Rossman up to chief and Sergeant Danfield, the tenants, we have a vacant sergeant position. Now, we are in the process of testing internally and Harold is still on here, yeah. Uh, for that position. So we've got some time, I think, within the next month or two, we expect to have some test results on the officers that are applying for the position.
I'm thinking about probably within a month, we'll have the written test. I think in thirty days and then we'll have an oral. Shouldn't take long after that. So I'm hopefully before July first, that.
Mr. Hammond, sir?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Joe, um, on the seasonal help, uh, it's primarily for mowing and landscape cleanup kind of work.
Cemetery.
Um, I would, I, I'm assuming you know, but if not, could you, um, do a quick cost benefit analysis of farming that workout this year? And, uh, we look at that going forward. There's a lot of local mowing outfits.
Right.
Um, and that makes our, takes our costs from, from fixed to variable and we can negotiate. I, 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 I just, I hate to take on employees right now. If we're going to come back in, in a couple of months and, and look at cutting our budget, you know? I'd rather give it to a contractor that we can we can muscle around a little bit and get a good price and, and hold them to task on performance versus an employee. Um, when we're going to have to tighten our belt maybe, so I'd like to know those, and those comparisons.
Right, one, as you pointed out, we will need to negotiate with the union. As you know, I'm sure they have a cost and they're about subcontracting out work, but I'm sure we could work something out with them on that.
Well, that was done once before subcontract the cemetery's out and it was a disaster. Uh,
No, we will definitely do that.
Yeah.
The other, the other position we have vacant, uh, is a code officer position currently is on medical leave. And we don't have any code officers, Harold is in the process, Chief Rossman is in the process of interviewing some candidates, so I wanted to, you know, that that is a critical position from a standpoint of what we do to keep our community up in good shape. Plus, uh, we do have community development block grant money we applied for and waiting award on of almost ten thousand dollars for code enforcement. So that position, that, uh, the additional position hours, it can't supplement what you have. You have to add on to what you have to be eligible. So that's just another aspect of it. So I want to at least make you aware of the fact that we don't have code, a just dedicated code officer. We certainly have police officers that can identify things that are an issue, but nobody, uh, dedicated strictly to looking at code enforcement issues. So.
Janar?
Um, yeah, I just kind of want to weigh in. I agree with, um, uh, Councilman Hammond, uh, that if based on COVID and based on the economic impact, uh, that may be a negotiating point. I know every community's, um, reflecting on their budget and doing things, we're doing the same thing in, in another community I'm with, uh, as well. However, the police, um, we do need to move forward on hiring that full-time officer. That's going to become an overtime issue really fast. And you're going to spend a dime to save a nickel. Um, that position, um, technically we need two full-time officers. We've been down since nineteen eighty-five on one, but uh, for the police department, they need to replace that officer. Uh, and I would also say that the number of hours that we had for our code enforcement, um, that's a busy, busy job in spring and summer and it's coming. And, uh, it is crucial to stay on top of that. Um, and they've got a training, learning curve, uh, yet to train somebody new and that those are two positions that are, uh, extremely important. The code enforcement is not that expensive. Um, it is budgeted, it's a part-time position, uh, without benefits, but it's uh, the intrinsic value of the community. I would strongly recommend that we move forward with a full-time officer, that we also move forward with the part-time uh, code enforcement and then, and then look at if it's possible, even, uh, subcontracting a partial, uh, mowing if that is what is needed until we can determine who's going to be the DPW director and, and, because that would be a full-timer replaced, right, Joe?
Yes, I prefer that way, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and then we can make the decision at that time.
You're looking at two full-time DPW, the one to replace or one, or was it seasonal one? One?
We normally would have a full-time and a seasonal.
Okay.
Vacant full-time because Chris, you know, that's normal.
Okay, so you're just proposing one full-time right now and, and a seasonal?
Well, we're proposing looking at contracting out.
Okay, but a replacement full-time and a contract or just a contract?
Just a contract at this time. Cause Chris is still acting. We don't want to hire a full-time if we're not sure Chris is going to be permanent.
Okay.
Right, that was my, yeah.
Okay.
I'm an advocate of contracting, exploring that as well. Don and I talked about earlier today. And, uh, the possibility and, uh, Mr. Hammond's session of a cost benefit analysis. The quickie would be good. So. Anything else, Mr. Young?
Uh, no, I don't know. We're going to talk about the DDA next or?
Does anybody else got any comments additionally on the budget? Okay, so, Mr. Randville, DDA, sir? You're silent.
I'm silent.
Now you're okay.
You're good.
Uh, I just had one comment of, uh, all this advertising, uh, this fifty thousand dollars a year advertising for downtown merchants. It just looks to me, it's getting a little carried away. Uh, we all know they're there. Uh, added expense, uh, because of the construction on twenty-four, uh, I think they need to tighten their belt up a whole bunch too. Uh, I don't know if that billboard was ever put over on Baldwin, but, uh, uh, I don't think that was necessary. Uh, too much, too much law.
Well, the DDA, we also need to schedule a time for the DDA board to make presentation on the budget. So I didn't know if you wanted to have them come in next Monday or the following Mon- Tuesday.
Either one, either one.
Okay.
I would say Monday. Because that way if we have issues, we can follow the problem, we can do it on Tuesday. I know there's been some comments about, uh, what's happening if we're not going to have a flower fair. How many staff members does that department need? And also, um, there's you know, we need to maintain our core or help our core businesses and, and as best we can. But like today, I happen to be downtown and going around just checking things. I counted ten trees that need to be replaced. Four of them are cut down, six of them are, four of them are dead, two of them are getting ready. And I don't think there's anything for some of our, just our core services and that budget, but we'll get an opportunity to review that and look at all of it. So. Anything else regarding DDA? Do you have any comments?
Not me.
Mr. Hammond, sir?
Yes, I, I just want to echo what John said. I read that, uh, budget proposal and it looks like a lot left to me. I'm not, I'm not sure what the right number is. But I would be much more agreeable to tangible assets such as trees. As opposed to advertising for businesses that could, uh, do some advertising for themselves frankly. Um, if they're even there, if they're even open this year. And I just think, um, you know, like I said twice already, it's going to be a difficult year and to go in front of the public and say we we're advocates of fifty thousand dollars in, in advertising when people are having trouble paying their property taxes and water bills is going to be a hard pill to swallow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we don't have a need or on our agenda council comments tonight. All we do at this point is move to adjourn. Break, Mr. Young?
You can ask.
Does anybody have any that they would like to provide?
I, I would comment that we do have the pre-construction meeting tomorrow for the M dot M twenty-four project. So we'll know hopefully better what their timing, phasing is of getting that work accomplished here in the village.
And as you all know, the Heist Road has restarted that water main project. And, uh, they've actually closed off a couple of streets that are not passable. Uh, like Sherry, I think you can't get on it. Heist Road through that downhill street right now. Mr. Randville, do you have something else?
Yeah, uh, if you're going to go out for proposals or find out about mowing, I haven't broken down for strictly parks and then strictly cemeteries.
Right.
Uh, I would have it broken down by the actual area. I mean, what is Evergreen going to cost? What is it?
Well, yeah, that's right.
Pick and choose, maybe peace know a little bit.
Right, right. Separate bids, yeah. Very good.
A motion to adjourn? Mr. Matheson, sir?
I'll make the motion. To adjourn.
Support.
We have a motion to support. All those in favor, can you give aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we'll look forward to the next opportunity. I'm enjoying these, uh, Zoom meetings. Um, and I would like to recommend that the council, when you're watching some of the DDA budget, jump on their brand marketing Zoom meeting. Jump on their promotion committee meeting. I've been doing that recently and I've learned a few things and I've been able to watch and I understand it better instead of just me sitting back and guessing.
Well, no, I'm.